Hi, everybody. Thanks for coming. We just came out of executive session as we discussed the employment history of several individuals and no action was taken during that session. I'm going to open the public hearing. No actions required. The purpose of holding this hearing is for the school district proposes to appropriate the sum of $200,000 from the repair reserve fund for the rehabilitation and reconstruction of boys' and girls' toilets within the elementary wing of the main building. Work will include replacement of all plumbing fixtures, replacement of interior finishes, including ceramic tile walls and floors and ceilings. The work will also include modifications to provide full compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act, accessibility guidelines and requirements. Furthermore, later on, the board may adopt a resolution approving the use of the repair reserve. The legal notice of the public hearing was in the Journal News, the PCNR, and was also advertised in the Highlands Current as per open meeting law. There is a sign-in sheet. We really don't have many members here. If you'd like to sign in, please do so. If there are any questions, please feel free to come up to the mic. No questions? No comments? Okay. It seems like we've exhausted our...
(laughing).
At this moment, since there's no questions or comments, we'd like to thank you all for coming. For three of you.
Sorry about that, John.
John, thank you. We appreciate...
Sounds like I'm going to go get dinner.
Have time to run home, maybe? I'll get home in time for Jeopardy, too.
Okay. Sure? No questions? All righty.
Would this be a project that would go on over the summer? Is that...
If we get the approval from State Ed.
Yeah.
It's a race to the finish, though, because John told us it takes about 36 weeks or something crazy, right?
They're up to an eight-month review time now. It's actually gotten worse. They're looking at projects that were submitted in May right now, so...
And this project is one that would require... It's not something that can be done while school is in session?
Right.
Is that correct?
No, not unless those toilets can be taken out of service and closed for a...
The hallway.
At least a two- or three-month construction duration, yeah.
So it might be getting pushed to summer.
Right.
There's another bathroom? I mean, I don't...
There is, but it's very hard to have that kind of a construction project going on.
I'm sure.
And, I mean, they're so close to classrooms. I think it'd be so disruptive that I don't think we'd want to do that.
They're on the hall. They're on the main hall in the middle school building, right?
Elementary.
Perfect.
The boys' bathroom is as soon as you come in through the doors, the main elementary doors.
It's to the left?
Straight ahead, basically. And...
Right next to the principal's office.
It is? Okay.
How long would a project like that take to do it?
Two months, two, three months?
Probably two to three months.
Oh, wow.
Yeah, between...
And you would need to do both of them at the same time. I was having this vision of, like, being able to do one and let the other one be, like, unisex and have, like, a bathroom attendant.
I don't think it's really feasible.
They both... They can be done separately and we're not... The piping that's connecting the two within the walls will be remaining, so we could keep one operational and do one construction and then rotate it. Construction can be done after school hours if that's an option and just have the construction go from 3:00 to 11:00 or when the building's available.
And then there's a differential, a nighttime differential that would come into play, or...
Can you step up to the mic?
Oh, sorry. There might be a cost differential. It really depends on how the contractor's going to bid it. It wouldn't be a mandatory overtime environment because he's not providing someone here during the day shift plus the night shift, so they won't be working double shifts. So it might not be a cost differential. It depends on how the contractor bids it and decides to do the work.
So we might have some options.
Sure.
But, yeah.
We might not have to wait till next summer. Might have some options.
Cut. All right. Thanks, John, again. Appreciate it. Looking forward to the projects. Okay. At this time, since it's before 7:00 p.m., we have to close the public hearing. There's no further comment, and we will reconvene at 7:00. Okay. We're back from executive session where no decisions were made, so we'll start our... We just had our public hearing regarding the elementary wing bathrooms, and there was no comment, no public, really, except for our architect and reporter and Ms. Swinburne from Garrison, so we moved ahead. At this time, I'll turn it over to... You want to do special presentation first, the budget, or you want to give your comments?
Oh, no. Why don't we have...
Okay. Turn it over to Ms. Dineo, who will do the budget presentation.
Okay.
This is what I'm going to have. Dramatic lighting.
Yeah. It sounds very dramatic, right?[414.41][414.41](laughing). That's what happens when I get the latest edition of the latest version of PowerPoint. All right. So tonight is our Part One of the budget development. Last time, we had the rollover budget presentation, and tonight, we start talking about the parts of the budget that make up the operations and maintenance and the support segments. The next business meeting, we will have the educational rationale of the educational So tonight, we're going to go a little bit more in-depth on the governor's executive proposal and talk about the tax levy limit because all of the parts of the calculation are now provided, so that I was able to calculate that and verify all of the components. We'll talk about fund balance and reserves and where we are with our fiscal stress. And then we'll talk a little bit about the budget, the administrative and the capital components. There's a lot of slides that you'll see that I'm just going to pass by because those are just in-depth descriptions of the sections of the budget. Some of the information on those slides change, but the detail that makes up the administrative and the capital components does not change from year to year, so I don't think that you want me to read 30 slides to you. You can go on and read those yourself. We'll talk about the capital reserve fund, which is... would be Proposition Two if the board decided to go forward with that. And then our pupil transportation vehicle proposition, Number Three, again, if the board decides to include that in the May referendum. So Governor Cuomo presented his executive budget on Tuesday, January 16th, and overall, there was a 3% increase in school aid. That's the... all of the aid, which is foundation aid and formula aid. Now, we have two types of aid that we get. Foundation aid is just a base operating aid, and that's the majority of our aid. From the percentage that the governor gave to school districts, Haldane got a whopping Most of our increase were formula aid, which is driven by prior-year expenditures. As in the years past, there were no changes to the formula aid. However, new this year are caps on the proposed formula aid, which is important because the more we spend in certain categories, the more aid we get back. But in 1920, the governor... for the 1920 budget, the governor is proposing that our building, transportation, and BOSI's aid are capped at 2% growth. So if we do spend more money and we try to put expenditures through BOSI so that we can get aid back, he is proposing to cap that. But keep in mind that all of the things that we're talking about are proposals. The budget is not enacted until April, so these things could change. They could just be things that he was... he's trying to get out there in his entire package. He's also proposing change to the STAR annual growth. Right now, the basic and enhanced STAR exemption can go up 2% a year. He's proposing that that is flat and has no growth going forward, which will mean that our levy can go up. If the state is not going to kick in more money for the STAR exemptions, then that would come from the taxpayers.
Jan, can I ask a question?
Sure.
So that formula aid... I'm sorry. That formula aid, do we just need to think through the $200,000 that we're talking about that we had the public hearing about tonight? Is that connected to that somehow, our timing of that? Is that going to matter?
No. The $200,000 that you're thinking about spending for the renovations, those are in a reserve fund. That's a savings account.
So it doesn't make any difference?
No.
Doesn't make any difference?
It's completely separate. It doesn't make any difference.
Thank you.
Okay. So our tax levy limit will allow us to have a 2.62% increase on the levy. That's not the tax rate. The tax rate is calculated over the summer. Haldane's tax rate is very close to the levy increase because majority of our budget is paid for by tax dollars, so it really does follow along with it. It's usually less than what the levy is. So the increase for tax levy in 1819, the maximum, is $496,627. Keep in mind that our rollover budget was a little over $880,000, and so that leaves us currently with a gap of $385,129. That's before any retirements are taken into account and any changes that we've been talking about in our budget meetings. The superintendent and I have been having ongoing budget meetings with the building principals and the directors to try to see what next year will look like, what the structure of next year will look like. And there are some projected changes that could help with that $385,000 gap.
Big gap.
It is. It's a larger gap than last year. There are some factors that play into that.
The insurance.
The insurance increase was big this year. It was 3.75%. And the teacher retirement, we did warn of that last year, that the decrease in the teacher retirement system rate, it went down, but they had warned us not to get used to that, and it did, you know, swing back up a little bit. So this just shows you what the entire tax levy limit calculation worksheet looks like, so that when you hear the 2% tax cap references this right there, there's one line that references the 2%. That's why you can see that there are other factors that come into play, and each school district would be very rare for them to hit right at a 2% tax levy increase because there are a lot of individual factors that go into play. So someone might ask, well, why is our tax levy allowed to go up 2.62%, and there's a 2% tax cap? It just... that phrase got coined years ago, and it stuck for reasons.[923.82][923.82](laughing). But, like I said, right there is the only area where that CPI of 2% cap comes into play. This is a listing of all of our fund balances and reserves as of June 30th, 2017. This is the year-end audit, and that's... we will carry these fund balances till next year until the changes are made. You see down here, the repair reserve, there's $672,840 in the repair reserve, and Margaret, that's where the $200,000 will be coming from. So as you can see...
I know we have some aid, some matching aid with that when we spent it, no?
After. We're going to spend $200,000 on the project, and at the end of the project, I'll file a report, a final expenditure report, and then we get our building aid back the following year.
That's why I was asking, because if that's 1819...
Oh, the 34%. Right.
That's why I was asking.
No, I didn't get that, but I didn't connect that. I'm sorry. Yes.
It does matter.
It does matter, but that's still under a 2% increase. So if we... but the more that piles on, because $200,000 isn't a lot. It's not the exact... it's not a big... you know, if we were going to have the millions of dollars, then it's important for us to think about that going forward for our referendum.
Right.
And the timing of that, the $200,000 isn't going to put us over a 2% growth.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay.
Because it's small. It's small in relation. But if it's several million dollars, then that's something to bring into our conversations should that proposal go through. That proposal might just never make it to the final budget in April.
Right. So, but if it does, we're looking at getting 34% back on the 200 or not getting anything back on the 200?
No, we'll get our 34% back because when you look at our entire building aid, that $200,000 is not a large amount from the building aid that we get. We have millions of dollars...
Oh, in the big...
In the big picture.
Got it.
In the big picture that we get building aid on. Adding millions to that, maybe, and I'd have to do a calculation on that, but the $200,000, we're not in danger of losing that.
Okay, got it.
And that's in 1920, anyway. I hope that it's done by then.
Right. That's why I was asking if it was going to make a difference if we pushed it through sooner or later, but you're right. I get it.
Okay.
Thank you.
In December, the fiscal monitoring system, the statewide fiscal monitoring system results came out, and again, let me see if I can show... Haldane for 2017 has 0% financial stress, and so there's no designation for us there. The environmental stress did go up to 10%, but that's still not something to be concerned about. It still puts us into a category where there's no designation. We don't have any environmental stress, per se, even though it's 10%. You know, if you saw here in 2015, it was 20%, and was still no designation. The environmental stress are things like population, age, poverty, the property value, and the employment base of the community, not something that the school district has control over. Our financial stress is something that the school has finding... has control over. Our fund balances are healthy. We're not in a negative cash position, and we do use short-term debt, which is our bond anticipation notes. It's healthy to have some debt just because it's better use of your funds instead of having, you know, a purchase making a spike in your budget. You're having it over five years, which is what a bond anticipation note is, and it's healthy to have some short-term debt, and we're well below our percentage. If you want some more information on this whole monitoring system, there's the... whoops. There's the website at the bottom, and it's a very long PDF, but if you're interested in it, that's where you can find it. Also, we are holding at AA3 for our credit position with Moody's rating, so that any time we do go out for borrowing, we do get low rates. It's good knowing that going into, you know, the referendum. So as I was talking about before, the three-part budget is the way that school districts are mandated to present their budget. We have to talk about the administrative component, the capital component, and the program component. As you see, the program component makes up 75% of our budget. We'll be addressing that separately at the next business meeting. Today, we're going to talk about the top two. So these are the slides that I was talking about earlier. They look like a notebook. There's many of them, and it tells you... there's a detail, and it lists everything that's in the administrative component. I'm not going to go into much detail on these at all, but as you can see, it's the superintendent's office, the business office, the supervision in the schools, legal services, and then there's other pages that we're just going to really just pass by, but if you wanted to read the detail of what's in every corner of the budget, that information is here for you. And this is all still under the administrative component. Here, I'll just pause briefly. It talks about the retirement system benefits. This shows that the employee's retirement system is decreasing from 15.3% of salaries to 14.9. It's really negligible, the decrease there, and TRS raising from 9.8 to 10.363. Again, not a huge amount in the percentage, but again, keep in mind that that program is 75%, so it's a larger amount rather than the support. FICA and Medicare workers' comp, they're all under that benefit area. Our health benefits increasing 3.75% for next year. And again, that makes up a larger percent than in years past. They were using fund balance. The consortium was using fund balance the past few years, and it helped us out there. And as with anything, once your savings are gone and you don't replenish it, then this is what happens. So this is where (laughing)... this is where we stop with the administrative, and now I'm going to go into the capital, the capital component. Operations and maintenance, debt service, and inter-fund transfers. Again, it tells you how many staff members we have in the operations and maintenance department. Debt service, as I touched on before, are either bonds or bond anticipation notes, which are smaller, short-term obligations that are financed over five years. That's how we usually buy our buses. Inter-fund transfers. The repair reserve would be something that we would talk about. As a reserve, that would be considered an inter-fund transfer because the repair reserve fund is separate from our operating fund. One thing that came up during several of our meetings was the painting of the large gym, so I know that there's a section of the budget that's where there's projects, and we've been analyzing the list, the ever-growing list of maintenance that needs to be done. The large gym is really something that many people have thrown in there on their wish list.
And I think that part of it is we've done so much to upgrade the gym in the last year that things that weren't noticeable before are becoming very noticeable now. So that's one of the issues with that.
So as I talked about before, Proposition Number One would be to reestablish the capital reserve. This would not be cost the taxpayers anything. I just want to get that out first and foremost. In 2008, there was a proposition that established the capital reserve fund for 10 years with a maximum amount of $1 million. It's 2018. The term is up. If we want to keep the capital reserve fund as an open savings account, so to say, for facilities improvement, it needs to be extended by a vote again. So if the board would like to keep this fund alive, the voters would have to say yes.
And I ask why it was 10 years? Is that some sort of standard practice?
It's usually...
Every 10... So when we approve it, if we approve it again, it would be for another 10 years? It wouldn't just be...
Right. And what they want to show is that you're not just parking the money there, and it's becoming stagnant. They want you to use the money. If you're putting it away, it's for a certain purpose. It's for... we called ours the facilities improvement reserve fund, and over the years, we have used that. We've now run a million dollars through it. It was never... it never reached a million dollars, but we have been running a million dollars through it, and it just lets you think that what's the next 10 years look like? You could have it to be five years if you wanted, if you thought you were going to finish a project in the next five years, but they want you to have a purpose. The state wants you to have a purpose, not just put it there and, you know, park it for 20 years and not use the money wisely. There's a survey of the existing conditions, and the elementary-middle school building is underway. I just talked briefly with the architect as he was leaving after the public hearing, and he said that they were here today, and they were looking at some of the pipes. They're doing that pipe study that we've referred to in the past. It's going on right now. We're probably... he said he would come back to the board late February, maybe in March. They'll be ready to come back with a report and some recommended options for the new hot water heating system and electrical upgrades, but they're doing that report right now. Transportation. Again, there's a few slides here where you can go and read more in-depth about our transportation department. Proposition Three, should the board approve it, is to replace one 30-passenger school bus at a cost, including incidentals, which would be cameras and other options that we normally get on our buses, at a maximum cost of $55,000. And that's it. The one bus a year. It's not a big bus this time.
Okay, yeah. It's half the price. That's what I was noticing.
It's a half-bus. So, thanks for listening to me. I know that was a long one, but...
Well, thank you, and I'm very impressed that we continue, I know, with all your hard work to have fiscal stress of zero, and that's impressive, so thank you.
Yep.
Thanks. I'm attached to a wire, so I feel like I can't. We'll move into Dr. Bauer's superintendent report.
Okay, thank you.
So we have a number of positive things to report this evening. And it seems like right around February 1st, it becomes the time that all the ratings come out for school districts. And one, we did receive a rating yesterday on our graduation rate. We're not allowed to, it's still embargoed, so we're not allowed to share that. But I can tell you, it's extraordinary. And so, you know, we say congratulations, and we'll talk more about it. But congratulations to the entire Haldane community because if we're not coming together and working as a team, it doesn't work the way it's been working. So a couple of ratings we have. One is niche. Some people call it niche, though I guess it depends on what your preference is. But in the past, we have had niche ratings for the high school. And I think this is, we're moving into the third or the fourth year with the niche rating for the high school. But this year, both the elementary and the middle-level school also had a niche rating. And they are, they are considered, they have a number of criteria. They are considered the best schools in the United States and the best schools in New York State. So Haldane Central School District, I'll just give you a couple of the examples. Nationally, this is the school district as a whole. Best place to teach in America, 360 out of 9,850. District with the best teachers, and I see some of our best teachers sitting right in front of me. 1,098 out of 10,541, which is a national measure. Safest, one of the safest schools in America, 1,434 to 10,000, out of 10,576. We are 73 out of 670 as the best schools in New York State. We are, let's see. We are number one as the best place to teach in Putnam County. We are number one out of the bus, school district in Putnam County. We are number one for the district with the best teachers in Putnam County. And we are number one for the safest school district in Putnam County. So that's one of many different, or a number of many different measures. There are many more. So we did put that on our website. And so if you want to look at some of the other statistics for the elementary, middle, or high school, they are there. I would also like to, once again, as you know, we, our Blue Ribbon School up on the Hill, the high school, for both last year and this year, we became a high-progress school or what is called a reward school by New York State. So in all the schools in New York State, not all the districts, but all the schools, there are 155 high-achieving and high-progress schools, and we are one of them. And so this has been, that's elementary, middle, and high school. And so we are once again designated as a reward school. So the information is there, and you can find it on our website. And if, I'm asking Megan to kind of give you an understanding of the progression because not only are you given the award, but there's also rankings, so you can see us as we continue moving to the top. So congratulations to everybody who is involved in this. And again, this is, there's no one or 10 or 20 people that create a school like this. It's everybody that's involved in it. So congratulations. And I can't wait to share, when we can, share about our graduation rates. So then also, kudos to Ann once again. Again, we have, as was explained, a fiscal stress score of zero for the Haldane School District. So it doesn't mean that we don't have challenges, and it doesn't mean that we don't have money issues that we have to figure out and to work around. But it does mean that we are doing the best we can with what we have. And so congratulations on that. For those of you who joined us for our first annual Family and Friends University that was held on Tuesday, the 30th, a week ago tonight. It was, I thought, a really rewarding and excellent experience for everybody involved. We had great speakers. We had great thoughts and parents and people that took part in that. We were upwards of 100 participants. We had dinner. We had babysitting. We had a keynote, and then we had breakout sessions that were pretty evenly spread out. One was a breakout session called Hidden Mischief. And in this room was an actual bedroom. They brought a bedroom in, and they set it up. And they asked parents to come in and look at the bedroom as it was set up and explain what they should be worried about in the bedroom. And I can tell you, we had parents that were very surprised by the end of the presentation with the different things that were in there that they just passed by. And I think the more that you understood what was there and the more that they showed you, I think the more surprised the parents would get, I guess. And we actually asked the parents of the middle and the high school to choose that one if, at all possible, because that was important for them to see. And we told the elementary, it probably was another, the other breakout session would be better for them because by the time their children got to the point that the parents were looking at their bedrooms, it would be, it would be all different. And so the hidden mischief would be different types of hidden mischief. So we also had a very powerful speaker who, as a mom from Artsley, used to be a board member. And she unfortunately lost a son at the age of 19 to drugs. And she wanted to talk about the co-occurring experiences or problems that kids face and how kids with co-occurring issues have a much, much higher probability of getting involved with drugs. And it's with things like psychiatric issues, ADHD, anxiety, depression, any of those that would bring it to a place that the child would be, it would be a probable occurrence. So she's going to be coming back, and she's going to be speaking to our students. She's going to also be speaking to parents. And I think that that's something that she's more than willing to do. She has a foundation that she calls the Harris Project. Harris is the name of her son. And it was a very powerful night. And I think that, I knew it was going to be a powerful night, but I didn't anticipate the emotion that was generated that evening. And there were parents that were feeling very emotional, very happy about the fact that we had given them this information and then, and that they could use. But then they had to do some reflecting and think about, you know, it's the big job ahead as being a parent. So thank you for, all of you who attended.
And then Dr. Michael Nierney, who presented on...
Who was our keynote, yep. Michael Nierney. And it was more on brain development and some of the issues with the teenage brain and how it grows and how it prunes and how it develops. And he was also very powerful. So we, the new Haldane website, we are developing a new website that's about to go live in the relatively near future. And there will be people that will ask to kind of take a look at it, give us suggestions, tell us if we met our match, and if we've done what we probably need to do to give the community what they want in a website. So we'll be talking more about that. We've been working with a company who has an awesome template. And I think that that's really helped us to design a site that's going to be user-friendly. And we've gone from a non-user-friendly one to a moderately user-friendly one, and we hope to go to a pure user-friendly one. We also talked tonight about the progress of the pipe study. We do have our architect coming in, and they're going to share the information with us when the pipe study is completed. And they'll tell us exactly what we're looking at behind our walls and what we have to do with that when we get to the bond referendum and as we start talking more through the bond referendum.
Are you expecting that pipe study results...
Ann just spoke to him.
To be here by like next meeting or March?
I'm thinking more March. He said we might have the information. Oh, sorry. We might have the information the end of February because they're really working on the pipes now. But then they're going to go into electrical and mechanical and even go up on the roof. So before, then they'll have to make a report out of that. So I'm thinking probably not the next meeting, maybe the one after that.
Okay. So one of the things that we've also been discussing is some information about having a student representative on the Board of Education. And we are recommended that we have one of two options, that if we are truly going to have the representative sitting at the board table and being part of the process, we need to have a public vote. And that's one of the options. The other is to consider the student as a student advisor to the board. And we did make modifications of the policy to allow that to happen. But I know, Margaret, you had some thoughts on that. I didn't know if you wanted to talk about it.
Well, my thought was, if we're just changing the word, what does that do? Like, what's the difference between one and the other? And if it's really just a matter of the vote, I don't think anybody would say, no, we can't have this.
So I guess that's up to the board, what you, how you would like to proceed.
We would have to put this up for public vote.
So is there, is there a downside to doing it that way? Because this is a new law, by the way. This is something that just came up in January, which is why we didn't abide by it before. And the attorney just let us know, this is what we have to do.
Unfortunately, then, May, between now and... At the end of the year. We have to adapt her as a student advisor so she can remain with us through there.
And then put it up for vote.
And then we can put it up for vote. May will be graduated at that point. But we can put it up for vote to have a student representative rather than advisor. And they would be able to sit with us and...
So, but technically, we're just playing with the word.
It's...
Well, it's a little bit more. Right now, if they become a student representative, they're an ex officio member of the Board of Education. They're just a non-voting member that doesn't take part in executive sessions or any of the components that you wouldn't have a voting member be part of. As a student advisor, they can advise and they can share the thinking of the student body. And it's something that really districts have two options, and they can decide which way they want to go. So in order to have May sitting in the position she's in right now as a student advisor, we do have a shift in the policy that will allow that to happen. And then we can either continue it as a student advisor, or we can then move it to something where we have to have a vote, and then we have a student representative or a...
My sense is that the representative option is just a little bit more formal.
Yes.
And that would also make the students, the way the student conducts themselves, more formal. So they would not be able to, I don't know, maybe speak publicly on board topics unless it's been addressed at the board level, you know, things that we adhere to. Is that true? Like, the representative would have to adhere to like open meetings law and...
Well, with the capacity that we're using, that May has joined us, is basically, she is an advisor, keeping us abreast of the topics that the students are involved in. And that's basically the capacity as we see it now.
Yeah, that's what I'm sensing is that if we were to move forward to make it like an official representative and do a board vote and, or a public vote, that that would make the actual role a little bit different than what it currently is. The current role is like, is more like a more informal role as an advisor. Is that...
So basically, we have two options. We can continue as a student advisor and use board policy to support that, or we can move to a student representative and take a vote, and they would then an ex officio member of the board.
I think, in my opinion, we change policy to make the language to what May is doing for us right now. And then we can relook at this once May graduates in May-June and decide, we can do a public vote off. It could be in September. It doesn't have to necessarily be.
You shouldn't do that.
You do it.
Because that's a cost.
It's a cost. We just throw it on another one. So my thought was, I'm looking at the changes to the, you know, to the policy. And the only thing we changed was the word people representative to student advisor. So what's the difference?
Language.
Well, you have to do that now because...
Well, we have to, I get that. We have to do that now.
And one is approved by policy, the other's approved by vote.
But the student does exactly the same thing.
Basically.
Actually, at the end of the year, I'd also like May to weigh in on the decision. So I, I mean, just because, so, I mean, I would really, and I mean this really seriously, like, we were really motivated to bring in someone in a role like the one May has because we wanted to hear, in a, you know, a really authentic way, I guess, from the student body. And so, and I think the reports she's given us have been so rich and, to me, really very informative. And so I think in terms of understanding, like, what it was like for her and what might motivate people to do it in the future and what, like, what might make it more appealing or less appealing. I mean, I mean, it's a conversation I'd like May to weigh in on before she leaves. I mean, you know, I think one of the things, yeah, yeah, I don't know.
I think that's a good idea.
And, because I'll be honest, and I think even, and I don't even know if you've had a chance to really even process what the difference would be between an ex officio and a student representative and might be able to weigh in on what you think is a better fit for most students at Haldane. And I think that's important. But certainly, the thing to do right now is to change the language and the policy so that May can continue in the role that she's, she's taken. And then, and not just May, but I think having Julie Sniffin weigh in as well, maybe, I forget the new guidance counselors, but, I mean, somebody who really know, yeah, you know, so people who really know, like, what's, because I think it's good for the board. But I think one of the things that's nice about this position is it's a really good opportunity for somebody with interests like May's as well. And we're really motivated to give kids experience outside the classroom. So anyway, that was a long spiel. Let's ask May at the end of the year.
Yeah. So I think we're on agreement, right? We're gonna, we'd like to reapprove the policy to make her an advisor, keep her going, not do a vote this year. If we were going to do a vote, maybe it's next year to make a bigger change. But that's not currently what we need to do.
So have an advisor for next year's board again?
Yeah, because we wouldn't do a vote till May.
That's true. We wouldn't.
Yeah, we wouldn't do it, yeah.
Right.
It would at least be an advisor through the end of this year and into next year. And we could make some...
Then you go for now.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. So we will be having our fourth annual Superintendent's Forum with high school students on the budget. It'll be held on the 8th of March. And this is where we invite any student that has an interest in the budget process to come in and talk about it. We provide a luncheon for them, and they come in. I do a quick presentation on what is presently in the kind of developmental stage, and then we go from there. And the kids weigh in on what they think is the right choices in certain things, what things they have a real interest in, what things they would like to see happen. You know, it's when they realize that their suggestions are being taken into consideration. Can't guarantee anything, but it certainly is an opportunity for the kids to make a statement about what they would like to see in the budget. Our next meeting with the Board of Education is, will be on the 27th of February as opposed to the 20th, which would normally be the week that we would have the meeting. But we will be in midwinter recess. So we're just reminding people that it is scheduled for the 27th of February. We are also letting people know that the Board of Education Executive Session previously scheduled for Tuesday, March 20th, from 5:30 to 7:00 is tentatively resc... Oh, no, we're not, we're not saying that. I need to tell you about something before I...
I was wondering where that...
We may be in sectionals for both the boys and the girls basketball. So I forgot to do that part first. So on the 20th, so we would like to know, based on the circumstances, since there's going, there will be a lot of people, especially the people who are going to be presenting that may not be here, would you like to change it to either Wednesday or Thursday of that week?
When we know if they actually...
Soon.
I think the likelihood is probable.
Yeah, I think we're going to be.
Okay, okay.
And the semifinals will be, I guess, at the county center, and then the finals will be elsewhere. and then the finals will be elsewhere. So, this is a question. Would you like to make a change and notify people now from the 20th to the 22nd?
It's fine for May.
Fine for May.
Yeah.
Okay.
I think you skipped over snow days.
Oh, did I? Let me go back. So many different things on here.
But wait a second. That's just the 5:30 to 7:00 portion?
No, it's for the, it would be the meeting.
And the board meeting.
Yeah, the home, yes.
So we'd move, okay, the whole shebang would go from Tuesday to Thursday.
The whole shebang, okay.
Because, because the presenters, you probably will not have the athletic director and the high school principal here that night. So if you want to hear their reports.
Yep.
Okay, so, yes, so we'll move it from the 20th to the 22nd.
Got it.
Okay, and snow days, which is very timely.
What's the word? Have you been getting some alerts?
Yes, I've been getting some alerts. And what they're saying, every time we get an alert, it's the beginning, the start time is earlier. So we have heard, probably around 8 o'clock is going to be the start time of snow tomorrow morning. It'll continue between 8 o'clock to 12 or 8 o'clock to 1 o'clock, and then it turns to ice and freezing rain. So, and bless you. And it's going to go through probably about 9 o'clock. And if what they're predicting actually happens, we're in the four to eight inch range of ice and snow. So we, and I have my phone out tonight because the superintendents are trying to decide if we're gonna have a 4:30 call in the morning or if we're gonna have a call later this evening so we can give people a heads up. Chances are, unless something happens and it goes somewhere, but not here, we probably will not have a school tomorrow. The other is that there's a real concern that it's going to be very difficult to clear out the school systems in the region quickly. So there may be a delay and a substantial delay on Thursday. We will try very hard not to have a second snow day. So if the snow day does happen tomorrow, we will not have Easter Monday as a vacation day. And if there is another snow day before the winter ends, we are not impacting vacations, but we are impacting a full-day superintendent's conference day on March 23rd will become a half-day.
So we currently used three snow days plus one emergency water day. So that's four. We have two additional days built into the schedule, meaning that day five, which could possibly be tomorrow, we lose April 2nd.
Yes, Easter Monday.
Easter Monday.
So one of the things, the way that it's scheduled, we actually, in reality, and we hope we never have to do anything like this, but we actually will not have an impact on state aid until we've had nine snow days. So right now, when you go past four, we start giving days back, which brings it, that keeps it at a lesser number. And then we have 187 days in the calendar. So it would actually bring us to the potential of, we need 180. So that, those seven plus the other two that we start pulling back. I don't think, I hope we never have an experience where we have nine snow days in a winter.
Let's hope it's not this one.
Yes, so... So, so that's, people were asking about when does it affect state aid. We still have quite a buffer. But we're hoping that if tomorrow, and it's probable that tomorrow will be a snow day, that that will be our last.
Do you guys want to start advertising babysitting on snow days? I was telling you, high schoolers babysitting on snow days? That would be so amazing.
Right, call Chloe short now. So, just one thing, I have two comments, one on the snow days. You know, I know there's been comments about the snow and closing school, but, you know, years ago, you know, this has been addressed in the sense of the schedule. You know, you go back to where the schedule was years ago. We used to have three snow days.
Yeah.
And the schedule was really adopted to really address that with adding the four snow days and then building in the two give-back days to basically have six snow days. And, you know, that's just the cost of, that's the way it is, you know?
Cost of living in the Northeast.
Yeah, you know, and listen, we all probably know people that, I mean, I have relatives that live in Rochester and people that live in, like, Chicago, the Midwest. And they'll tell you, it'll take like a blizzard to close the schools. But we're not in Rochester or Chicago. And that's, that's the way it is. And if we get to the point where we have seven, eight days of snow days, if we're in that problem, all the school districts in our area are in that problem. And it always gets fixed and it gets addressed. So, you know, it's just something that, you know, you need to know it's coming. You should always expect, if you're gonna live in this, not just cold spring, in this area, you should expect, you know, five, six snow days a year. It's just, it's just the way, the way it is.
And I think we discussed that at the last meeting, that the decision isn't just made in a vacuum.
Right.
There's a lot of, that goes into it.
Right.
And we sent a letter just kind of outlining the process. And I can tell you, when you have 19 superintendents on a phone call at 4:30 in the morning, you know, it's, there's a lot of time and energy and thought that goes into it. And, you know, I think that it's rare that we can have a storm that's really, you know, actually a no-brainer, you have to close. And this one looks like it's a potential. And we would never call it unless we absolutely know that there's just not a way that we can open the school the next day. And it looks like tomorrow's gonna be one of them.
I'm sorry, I'll finish on this.
We're just, like, I think people forget, there's 1,000 feet elevation from here to the top of East Mountain. I went for a walk up Bull Hill over the weekend. I didn't even go that far. But like, even in that amount, you forget, elevation makes a really big difference when it comes to temperatures and precipitation, you know? So, anyway, I, not that, yeah.
I brought that up once, but, correct me if I'm wrong, because we do say that, but that's really not, if just getting up East Mountain Road was the one issue, don't we, we have drop-off points in those situations where if it's just that road, that's it. We're not gonna close the whole district because of one road, right? So there is a place, a system in place where if you live up there, they might have to come down to the drop-off point, right?
And I think we had one situation, it was either last year or the year before, where it probably wasn't possible for them to bring the kids to the drop-off point just because of the way the storm was. So we excused them for the day.
Right, okay.
So, I mean, there are different options. And we said that we'd not consider, it's a weather-related, you know, absence. And that's what it is. So, I mean, we take into consideration the whole district, and we take into consideration what's needed. We also take into consideration how well the streets have been cleared. And there have been times that we have not been able to open simply because the plowing wasn't done in a way that we could bring kids in. So that's also a situation.
And also getting the staff in. I mean, it also depends on where the staff is. And we can't have, you know, 25, trying to call for 25 substitutes because it's just not conducive, so there's a lot that goes into it.
Yeah. And my last comment, I just wanted to go back to one and two when you're talking about the high school, the designated reward school and the niche.com. So, you know, one thing that I've noticed over the years, and especially this year, with my kids being seniors, is, you know, in this day and age, with colleges being so, so competitive, okay? You know, it's not even just enough to have, you know, a GPA and SAT scores. You know, it's so competitive. And it's just, there's just no doubt in my mind that the Haldane transcript has a significant weight to it, where a Haldane transcript to another student from a different school with the exact same credentials, I believe the Haldane is that extra push, okay? And that goes, that definitely goes a very long way. So I think Haldane has got an amazing reputation in the colleges. And one of the things that I was thinking about was, I know, do we do anything with, I think it's the Westinghouse search, you know, where, because it's... What I'm talking about is, the Westinghouse is where you can track students after high school, like, to see, like, how many of the kids graduated from college, okay? A, I think that would be something that would be interesting to see, okay? But do you think, I feel as though the colleges have that information as well. And they see that our kids, not only are they getting into the colleges, you know, but they're graduating from the colleges, you know?
There's a difference between what you're getting, how many kids get accepted and how many kids graduate.
Exactly.
Yeah.
And I see, I think they see that our kids are successful coming out of the colleges. So, so I guess two things. One, just pointing it out, that the Haldane diploma means something, okay, in the eyes of the colleges. And I think that would be something, you know, maybe for the next, you know, superintendent as a next initiative, to really start tracking those numbers. Because I know that's not really something that we look at, but I think that would be very interesting data to look at, is, you know, where is the class of 2014? How many of them graduated college? Class of 2012, how many of them got their four-year degree? I think that would be interesting.
Do we have like an alumni association or something?
You don't even, you don't need, you can, you don't even need, you do, this is, this is in a database. It's in a database. I mean, am I right, Diana? So, you know...
There are completion...
Right. I mean, technically, technically, students can opt out of that. So, like, if a student wanted to opt out, saying, no, I don't want to be tracked, okay, technically, they could do that. But for the most part, you know, it's, so...
I just want to back you up, Evan. I think it absolutely is great accolades. And I want to thank everybody in the room because, like Dr. Bowers mentioned, it really takes a lot of different people and effort on everyone's behalf. So, thank you. And students. May, I think, I don't want to put you on the spot, but I think this would be a perfect opportunity if you could share, perhaps, where some of your classmates have applied, where they're getting accepted. I'm just curious, I'm sure this information's gonna come out at some point, but if you have info, you don't have to, no names, just schools.
Yeah, sure.
I know a lot of people have been, people are still waiting to hear acceptances, especially people who are applying regular decision and, like, early decision too. But a lot of people I know have been accepted to their top schools or even deferred is still impressive. I know people who were deferred from Columbia and Harvard. So even if that's not immediate acceptance, still being deferred from schools like that is still like an achievement in itself. And, I don't know, I know a lot of people have been accepted to their top choices or schools that they were really interested in. Elon, Bard, I got accepted to George Washington, which was my top choice. So I was really happy about that. But, yeah, it's going well so far, and people are still waiting to hear back. But I think a lot of the general stress about it is easing now that applications are all due, and it's just a matter of waiting to hear back.
Great.
Thank you. Wasn't trying to put you on the spot. I was just curious, being that we were on this topic. Okay, thank you, Dr. Bowers. Moving on to information reports. They're there for our viewing, will approve following meeting. Communication from the public. Any communication at this time? No? Okay. Moving on to consent agenda personnel. Oh, sorry, do I have, oh, yeah, I do. Sorry, consent agenda minutes. May I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay, consent agenda personnel. May I have a motion? Actually, we're going to, I'm looking for a motion just for items one through eight and 10.
I'll make the motion, from one through eight and 10.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. May I have a motion for item number nine?
Why are we calling nine out?
Ms. Formularo has to read the resolution.
Okay, I'll read the resolution.
Well, I'll make a motion.
Yeah.
To, for number nine?
Do you want me to read the resolution first?
Oh, I don't know.
Yeah.
Okay. The resolution reads, resolve that the Board of Education does hereby appoint Louis Patak as Civil Service Law Section 75 Hearing Officer in the matter involving employee identification number 265, and authorizes the hearing officer to hear evidence, make a transcript of proceedings, and to issue a written report of his findings of fact and recommendations, including a disciplinary penalty if any. Be it further resolved that employee number 265 is hereby suspended without pay for the period through and including February 22, 2018.
Okay, now may I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, moving on to unfinished business. So, in terms of the superintendent search, the ad was closed on February 2nd. And the board will be meeting with BOCs and Executive Section next Tuesday, February 13th, to review the next steps, to review everything that they present us in terms of the candidates. And we'll decide a good time for all of us to meet to begin the interview process, which will most likely take place the end of February, beginning of March. Those details are gonna be worked out next Tuesday with BOCs.
What time are we meeting, what time is it?
8:00 PM.
Right, right.
And where are we doing that?
Middle School, High School library. And that is an executive session. So there will be no public due to the confidentiality of the matter. Okay, policy review process. So, one of our goals this year, and one of Dr. Bowers' goals, was to review the policy manual. And the process has begun. Dr. Bowers has given us one and two. And we're just trying to figure out the best way to work through the process. And I think there were some recommendations made, perhaps that we could meet a half hour earlier before every business meeting and just try and go through them rather than taking up the time within the meeting. And I think that's a great idea. I wanted to pull the board and see if anybody had any other suggestions or...
So what you would do is assign the board, like, we're gonna go through policy this number, through this number. It'll be multiple policies, right? We won't just do one. So we can try to move through it.
Would this be an open meeting, or this would be?
Yeah, it would have to be.
So, okay. So we start the meeting at 6:30?
Right, but we do this first so that the public doesn't have to come and listen to us hash through that if they don't want to.
Okay, right, okay.
They're more than welcome. They're welcome.
But, I mean, we would still formally open the meeting. Because it would be an open meeting, what we would do is we would just start the meeting 30 minutes early. We'd structure the agenda so that these policy review discussions were...
The first half hour?
The first half hour. And we would go for, you know, I mean, my guess...
We would continue the regular business.
We're starting at seven.
Starting at seven.
I think that, I think that make, I think that makes sense.
I do as well, because I know, even when we just get a few of the policies and doing the first read and the second read and going back and forth and marking up, and I think it'd eliminate a lot of that process.
So we're talking about doing that maybe the first time, March 6th? And maybe Laura and Diana, you guys can consider what...
Policies.
What numbers you'd like to assign us so we can come in prepared? And we'll see how it works?
Sure. And we're only doing it on business meetings, not on workshop meetings?
Oh, okay.
Or did you want to do it on workshops?
I don't know, I think we should do it on meeting and workshop.
I think that's kind of a lot to ask.
Okay.
And also...
Right now, you know, we're gonna be doing all that superintendent stuff and budget stuff.
That makes sense. And our business meetings have been shorter.
Yeah.
I mean, tonight's, actually, even tonight's not very long. Yeah, I think business meetings, I think that's a good idea. I like that.
And if we feel like we're really anxious to do more, we could add.
Okay, I agree with, I think that's a good, I think, I like that.
Yeah, let's start with business meetings, and then we'll see how.
Sounds good.
We do.
Okay.
Okay, so, any communication from the public? No? No? Okay. Moving on to new business, Ms. Farmararo.
Okay, these are the CSC CPSC recommendations, and the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the recommendations by the Committee on Special Education and the Committee on Preschool Special, Special Education as indicated.
Okay, may I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All of those in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Okay, this is a policy review. Are you planning to adopt it at this point?
I think the consensus was that we are gonna adopt it, so.
So, just wing it with the, okay.
Yeah.
So, the recommended action is that the Board of Education adopt Policy 1340, Student Representative to the Board of Education.
It's Student Advisor, but that's okay.
Student Advisor, right.
Mm-hmm.
And, oh, okay. It's titled Student Representative to the Board of Education. Okay, so-
So we have to make that change.
It was actually changed on the policy, but not in the language, uh-
Okay, so let me, let me re-say that then. Okay, so the recommended action is that the Board of Education approve the amendment to Policy 1340, Student Advisors to the Board.
Good. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay. And this is the resolution authorizing the use of the funds for the repair reserve?
Just, um, point out that there is a roll call for, for the policy, the Student Advisor.
That's not on our-
It's on, uh, it's not on the-
Are you sure that's the right po- it's for the policy one?
I think that's for the SECR.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's the SECR, okay.
Okay, then, that, my mistake, I'm sorry.
I saw the last page, was perhaps the same thing.
Okay, so this is the, uh, approval of the resolution authorizing the use of the funds from the Repair Reserve to repair the bathrooms. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the following resolution, "Resolved that the Board of Education authorizes the expenditure of a sum not to exceed $200,000 from the Repair Reserve Fund for the purpose of rehabilitation and reconstruction of boys and girls' toilets within the elementary wing of the main building. Work will include replacement of all plumbing fixtures, replacement of interior finishes, including ceramic tile walls and floors and ceilings. The work will also include modifications to provide full compliance with Americans with Disabilities Act accessibility guidelines and requirements."
Okay, may I have a motion?
Motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, so this is the approval of the SECR resolution, which is a roll call vote. And the recommended action is that the Board of Education approves the attached SECR, which is the State Environmental Quality Review Act resolution for the elementary school boys and girls' bathroom renovations. So, I need a motion, a second, and then I do a roll call.
Okay, may I get a motion, please?
Motion?
Second.
President Hammond.
Yes.
Vice President Clements.
Yes.
Trustee Schwartz.
Yes.
Trustee Parr.
Yes.
Trustee Daley.
Yes.
And the motion carries.
Okay.
That's so exciting.
Let's get that, those bathrooms, uh-
Gosh, one step closer. I think those bathrooms need care of.
Maybe. Okay, uh, schedule a Board of Ed forum. Okay, so, this is the, I'm trying to remember, okay, so you're doing the budget with the student forum. This is the, um, we usually get together with the high school students, uh, two of us at least, um, and have discussions about what they'd like to see, or they tell us basically anything, uh, they'd like. And the proposed date is Thursday, March 9th.
No, that was last year's date.
Oh, sorry.
Thursday, March 8th this year.
And that's when Diana's doing the budget talk, right?
The budget. So, this is on here to discuss when we think we would like to-
Yes.
-do that.
So, is that correct? Diana, you're doing the budget conversation on the Thursday, the 8th.
And so this will be whenever in March.
So maybe after that, at some point or the week after. And sometimes I think what happens is we schedule it and then we learn that there's some sort of regency exam, you know, there's some sort of conflict.
Oh, where?
There's a, there's a school trip, there's something, so we can like throw out some dates, but we'll have to be a little flexible.
I think we should stay within March, because there are some trips.
The end of March is, is the vacation week. First week in April would be the best for me. I'm off that week, so.
Yeah, we could switch it up.
Yeah.
Ah, that's nice.
Yes, don't you remember? He did like our calendar last year. Sorry, Evan, I didn't bring it up.
Busted.
Speaking of, that calendar should be coming, right? How's that calendar moving along? He won't care this year, because it won't affect him anymore, his kids are graduating.
Well, we've had one meeting, we're gonna move into a second. Right now, I can tell you, the, um, districts are about, just about split in half, just like they were last year. So, we're not sure exactly where we're going, but, so-
I think in like Thursday, April 5th.
I mean, I, I can do pretty much any day that week.
Well, we don't usually have more than two of us, no.
Well, we-
We can't. The only thing, I have, like, between work travel and I have some family travel I'm gonna have to do in the spring, um, I can't, I, you all should decide on a date that works for you, because I, I don't, I can't commit to any dates.
I think we've, in the past, you know, we've kept it casual, when it's more than two of us, you know, it's-
Someone doesn't speak.
Yeah, it's more like-
Right, I can't remember.
I think, I mean, technically, it, it, yeah.
Technically, it's open.
It was open, I mean, we, 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 we used to call it, we used to call it, we called it a board meeting.
We called it a public meeting and we all spoke.
But only students.
So, I mean, we could also call it a retreat if we really wanted to, right? Couldn't we? I mean-
That's right, we called, we did a, we did, made it a public meeting last year.
Yes, because we were all there.
Yeah.
Four, four, three or four of us were there.
Okay.
So.
Thursday, April 5th.
April 5th?
Same time, 8:15.
Um, works for me, and that's what-
And then, yeah, and then Diana, you'll check with the school calendar if there's-
Yes, make sure there's no issues with that election.
Conflicts.
Okay, final call, any communication? You all look like you're dying to get up to that mic. Not really? Come on, Andrea. Alrighty, well, uh-
So I should let you know that it looks like we're gonna be having a call, um, with the, at least the Putnam County superintendents, um, within about 15 minutes if we're finished.
Stay tuned.
Stay tuned, folks.
All right, well, thank you all for coming. Have a good evening. See you next time. Good night.
Thank you.